Good evening. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today is Thursday, October 5th. It's 6:00 PM. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. [INAUDIBLE] Next on the agenda is delegations where any member of the public can address any of the items on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address? Seeing none, move on to new business discussion and possible action. Eastline Land Trust specified properties known as Hathaway Farms, Oswagachi Hills, and Brainerd Road. Mr. Siri, did you want to address this?
Can you press the wireless presentation?
There we go. This is just basically the same presentation I made last week at the public hearing. So, Kev, if you go to the first slide. As we said, Hathaway Farms, Oswagachi Hills, and Brainerd Road are the areas. And that's approximately acreage we'll be getting for Hathaway Farms, 114. Oswagachi Hills, 119.6. It's actually 134, but some of it is a conservation easement, so that was never included in the appraisal or what's been done. And then the 22.2 acres at Brainerd. Next slide, Kev. This would is, we've tried to make this level forever, and we can't. So, it's that little bit of a slump, but sorry about that. This is what has always been identified as the number one piece to preserve is open space in Eastline. The Hathaway Farms property in our POCD for a couple of renditions of it. But the next slide will show you what is left of it after it was purchased by Hathaway Farms LLC and now is being offered to the town. Basically, all the waterfront area that is right on the lake has been sold, 10 acres has been sold. Tip of it, the northern tip of that area to the, in the southeast corner, 6.6 acres has been now back under the control of Hathaway Farms LLC and a couple other companies, Portside Holdings and English Harbor Capital Partners. Here's a history of, I wasn't done with the slide yet, but that's all right. The area in the middle with the little X is the area that will be left to the Hathaway family as of right now. And the X on the northwest corner is the area that would be on Scott Road, and that's been, again, conveyed back from the land trust after purchased it. A caveat to give that back to them for development of several lots for housing up there. Next slide. And this shows the history. Back in June of 2021, Hathaway Farms LLC purchased 138 acres for $1,050,000. April 21st of 2022, a private sale of 9.9 or 10 acres on the water for $649,000. And September 12th, 6.6 lakefront acres, that would be just to the, as I mentioned, to the north of the other area on the lake, were transferred from Hathaway Farms to Portside Holdings and English Harbor, and they're, it's a related entity, no purchase price indicated. September 29th of 2022, the remaining 122 acres were sold from the land trust to Hathaway Farm, by Hathaway Farms LLC for 2.3 million. And the caveat was that the 12.6 acres over on Scott Road would be revert back to English Harbor, I mean to Hathaway Farms. Next slide. This is moving on to Hathaway, to Oswagachi Hills. The large area in the middle, where you see the trails going up, it's sort of, it's basically the second one there says the Sleepy Hollow area, which is 88 acres, which is the biggest area. Mitchell's, Mitchell Trust gave that to the land trust and under the caveat that it would be kept for open space. But here again, it was not specified. The map shows open space. The quick claim deed does not say open space, so there's no legal requirement to keep it that way. The property up in the tip above that, the purplish, that was the property given to the land trust by Norm Peck Jr. That is protected. No matter what, that has to be maintained as open space. Parcel C, which is the one that kind of goes across there to bridge it with the others, is a conservation easement. And then parcels D, E, and F are all considered undevelopable because they can't be accessed. So, and currently on, especially on the, you see the trails that are on the Mitchell property. If, again, our appraiser said that's not developable because of the ravine, you know, is there a ravine in there and the topography, it'd be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to develop. But as somebody pointed out at the public hearing last week, you never say never because things could be possibly developed in the future, you don't know. But we would lose all those trails in that area, which would be roughly half of the trails that we have up in Oswagachi Hills right now are in property part B. The land trust is part of the management, Oswagachi Hills Nature Preserve Management Team and Plan, the town, the friends, and the management. And the nature preserve is to be used for the benefit enjoyment of the people of, next slide, Kev. Well, and that's just actually a better slide, too, that shows you where the Xs are, what's there. On the left is what we enjoy for trails now. On the right is what we would lose if that property was no longer under the control of either the town or the land trust, and it was foreclosed on, we'd lose that. It wouldn't be developed, but we'd still lose access to half of those trails. Okay, next one. Okay, next one. We already did that.
I can see. I'm good.
Okay. You can keep going because we, I've already, and here again, except for the property conveyed by Norm Peck, it's all open, it's, that's the one that has to be maintained in perpetuity as open space up there. The red there is Raven Woods, or the Brainerd Road property is just more common now, 22.2 acres. That was appraised, and we'll talk about that in just a minute, at $125,000. But that's because right now there's no road access to it. You'd be able to access this road by, through Marshfield or Oakwood if someone, you know, took care of the property and was able to extend the road in there. And there, they would be able to have significant development, and the appraiser said that is a very desirable place to keep. As anyone that looked through the appraisal, see there's a lot of photos that show trails that have been maintained and are constructed and maintained by people from Giant Snack Beach Association and Giant Snack Heights. So, it's very well-used from those areas. And if people come down Brainerd Road, you have to go through the state property a little bit there, but they do access it there. And here again, that was deeded to the land trust for open space in 2022 by the Raven family, and it has been used as collateral by the land trust to secure the Hathaway Farms. And here again, the deed does not specify it has to be maintained in open space. So, that's, you know, the property thing or the property card that's in it, it's what the deed says. Getting into the numbers? Yes, please. Anybody who already done that? Right now, our appraisal for Hathaway Farms was $1,595,000 for what is left for the area we'd be getting. Oswagachi Hills, $575,000. Brainerd Road, $125,000. And as I said, if there was a road into that, that would be significantly higher. Subtotal is $2,295,000. And here again, the initial asking price was 2.3 million. We did not offer that. We offered less, we offered significantly less than this, but we came back to this number here eventually. So, that's what the costs are. This differs from what the appraisals the land trust got when they purchased it, but we're basing it on our appraisal. Next slide. One of the things, and here again, what we're talking about, we've already taken the first step in trying to get the $200,000 that are available in our fund, open space fund account. We want to leave a little bit in there. And here again, the $400,000 grant from the, from DEEP that the land trust currently holds has to be transferable to the Eastline per the contract. Conversations with DEEP, and this is a very good question. We haven't been guaranteed it yet, but we've been told it is not uncommon for this to occur. Here again, they don't want to guarantee it at this point because we haven't actually moved forward to, you know, we have a contract, but they haven't definitely said yes, but they said it's not uncommon for that to happen. Excellent. Option one, we won't talk about because I don't think any of you are going to be in favor of taking money out of the general fund to pay for this. The short-term note, rolling into a bond for next year, contract with a local bank, and here again, an option, but it's still a little bit more expensive. We'd only be paying interest, but, yeah, but then, and here again, all this has been worked out with bond counsel. We have spent a lot of time talking to bond counsel over the last couple weeks. Pay out of the capital funds and replenish next year. We'll lose a little bit of interest, but save on expenses because all those bonding costs and so forth, we don't have to go through that major cost. Those will be rolled into the body that we do next year. You can go ahead, the next one, Kev. And here again, that's the one we're talking about. Town already expects to issue bonds next year so we can realize our savings, and most importantly, it does not impact the general fund, the general fund on assigned fund balance. Go ahead. Here again, this is all of the purchase prices that he has right here, $25,000, and we estimate, and our attorneys are comfortable with those costs. And others, other fees are other fees because there are always other fees. So, we put an extra $20,000 in for that. So, we anticipate $2,350,000 with the DEEP grant, open space, it would bring it down to $1,750,000. Go ahead. Now, the cash needed, we put 1,950 after we said 1, but that's, okay, we're going to put the $200,000 from the open space. So, that really is the 1,750, but that'll be reduced from 1,950 because of the 200. Investment on earnings, invested funds, investment rate, so estimated interest income loss would be about $64,000. If we took a principal loan, we'd only have to take the 1,750 because we'd have the 200,000 already for the open space. He estimated, Kevin estimated a rate of about 5%. Could be a little more, could be a little less, but that's a pretty good estimate. Monthly interest is what we would be paying. Monthly interest payments would be $7,200, $7,300, so $87,500. So, it would save us about $23,000 if we did the money out of the cap, the bonded capital. Go ahead. Property taxes. Last time at the meeting, Aunt Chikalo pointed out that I said it'd be $17 a month. It would not. It would be $17 a year if your house was valued at 400,000. And it moves up to the 42, up to $42 if, a year, if you were, had a house that was valued at a million. And here again, this does not mean, oh, your taxes are just going up that year. This is based on just this note being issued. And the first impact would be FY 25, '26. Okay. And here again, requirements, clean title search. So far, the search is almost complete, and there's been nothing that we did not expect. Back taxes paid right there. That is what land trusts and Hathaway Farms are going to have to figure out, but it has to be paid before it happens, and obviously approval by town at the referendum. This is in addition to the $400,000. Okay. And timeline, we're, we're done with that. We're, we're at the, pretty much the end, so. Anyway, Kevin, you have something to present as well? First of all, before we turn over to Kevin, any questions I can answer for you?
Are there any legal doings going on in the background here that we also have to be aware of?
No. One of the, a good, there's been some questions that have come up. There's been newspaper articles that the Attorney General's Office has been looking into it. The Attorney General's Office only, and this was a discussion, this is not opinion during a discussion, was that the Peck property, that has to stay as open space. But I met with an attorney who specializes in, you know, basically, you know, land trust and so forth like that, apart from everybody we've used, to find out if there'd be any illegalities in what the land trust had done, put up property that was given to them for open space to use as collateral. He said it may violate their bylaws, and maybe not the most ethical thing to do, but it doesn't raise to that level where it would be illegal. He said they could, you know, argue that they put this up as open space, they're putting those up because Hathaway Farms with the aquifer and so forth like that is such an area that we need to preserve that it was worth doing that. So, but there's, you know, there's nothing illegal about there, and this is what I was told.
Yeah, I just heard rumor, and I just knew there wasn't anything filed. People mentioned the Attorney General, but I don't think this is his jurisdiction anyway.
No, and, you know, here again, I know, you know, there have been letters written by people who gave property there saying that this was not the intent, they gave it to them for open space, but, and Mr., like I said, Mr. Peck's property has to be preserved. But, and here again, there's nothing that would prevent, even if you can't develop it, it could be foreclosed on, which would mean we would lose that property.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
You mentioned the clean titles to it. You say they're working on it?
Yes.
When should that be finalized?
I would think within, probably the next week or so. Because here again, they have not, Hathaway Farms is an involved search. Then you have to do the, the properties up in Oswagachi Hills, which are a little bit easier, and then Raven Woods. They're doing the hardest part first, which has not shown anything that, like I said, we didn't anticipate and we didn't know.
Okay. The other thing, once the title to the three properties are clean, when do you think the contract will be signed so we can move forward with the purchase?
Well, that, well, we can, the contract, we've already got an agreement with him on the price and the terms of it. Once, if it's, if it moves to referendum and it's approved there, then the time, the clock would start on, on doing all the, now the closing type stuff. So, and that's all spelled out in the contract. So...
So, from what you know now, there's not going to be a problem once the referendum is over, and they're going to start working on the contract to sign?
Well, as I said, the contract has already been, we've agreed. The only thing we did do on the contract is right now, the, the last day that I've agreed for closing was January 1st, and the two attorneys agreed, January 1st isn't a good date because if, like, the 23rd or 24th of December is when anything's final, that's a tough week. So, we're going to push that to, I think, January 15th is the only thing that changed.
So, basically, there's a purchase and sale agreement in place, but it's contingent upon...
You're right, everything.
The Board of Select...
Right.
The Board of Finance and the referendum.
And here again, yeah, like I said, there's nothing right now, am I 100% sure this will be no problem? No. But I am very confident, we're, we're in good shape. And I, like I've talked, we've talked to bond counsel, we've talked to, like I said, I talked to people who deal with land trusts. We've gone a lot further than we would normally do to make sure that we're okay and moving forward with this.
Okay, thanks.
But those are good questions. I understand that. Pete, you had your hand up?
No.
Oh, I thought you did. Or I thought you were just making jokes.
Swap of what?
Lauren, Richard?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Siri. So, you know, last night, the Board of Selectmen unanimously approved going forward with this.
Yes.
So, the Board of Finance, our role is to see, you know, how can we pay for it? And, you know, does the town have the money to pay for it? So, I know one of the things I've spoken about over the, you know, my term is how I worry about debt and reducing debt. So, I asked Mr. Gervais if he could come up with sort of a financial analysis to say, yes, if we're spending this money, well, what, what costs might we be avoiding as well? Because, you know, the, the whole idea, the only way we keep taxes down is by growing the grant list. And if we take all this property off of potential development, then, you know, that makes it hard to keep growing the grant list. But on the other hand, it's those costs that we don't think about that may offset that decision, if that makes sense. So, thinking, you know, if, if homes were built, and then there's in-town infrastructure that has to go into place, there's families moving in, all of that type of thing. So, I, so I asked Kevin to put together a spreadsheet that, you know, helps us think about this from the financial aspect of borrowing the funds. And, and I agree, of the three options, you know, the three definitely makes the most sense, so.
All right. You want me to dive into this a little?
Kevin?
Yep.
Is it possible that we project to that screen as well?
So, Denise, right in front of you, there should be a little black remote. Like, it's just a Samsung at the bottom.
Oh, this one.
Make sure you point it just over here. You'll shut these eyes. Yep, that'll do it. So, this is the long legal sized paper you guys have in front of you. So, just starting from the left, we'll work our way to the right. So, I listed the three properties, and so it could be more than these, it could be less than these, but I was estimating 15 property, 15 houses on Brainerd, 30 on Hathaway, and zero in Oswagachi Hills. And so these, you know, this is all me, and then if I could, you know, if I pulled in an expert in that, you know, the department and talked to them, I'll, I'll speak to that as well. So, one of the things, the biggest item, obviously, is education, right? And how many students are in these properties? So, the U.S. Census, in Eastline, the average family is 2.6 members per household, okay? We have about 7,976 households, so I rounded that to 8,000. So, for all intents and purposes, you see 8,000 households there. That would just be rounding to the 8,000 number. And the links are right there below. So, if you, you know, you went to the U.S. Census, you'll tie out to these numbers. So, in Eastline, the average student per pupil cost is about 17, 750. This was as of 2020. So, if you think in today's terms, it's probably upwards of 20,000. So, but that's the, those are the best, the most current numbers I had online available. So, if we're doing, I did .8 students per household, and how I did that was 2.6 family members per, per unit. Your question?
Yeah, I have a question about that .8.
Okay.
Okay, so that's looking at Eastline's population as a whole.
Correct.
But if you look at new residents to the town and new home sales, does that figure stay the same, or does it go up? Because it seems as though a lot of the homes are fairly large homes and are bringing in more than .8 students.
Multiple kids. Correct. So, I didn't, yeah.
I think you're trying to be conservative.
Yeah, I didn't spend too much time digging into the, the numbers. And so, I didn't want to use .6 because I know there's something, you know, single-family households, so that's where I estimated the .8. And I was being conservative. Originally, I had 1.25, but that jumped our annual board of ed expense to $1 million. And I said, okay, maybe I was a little too not conservative there, so I scaled it back a little. So, you're 100% right, Rich. I mean, if these are, I'm estimating these are $600,000 homes, right? So, let's just scroll over a little bit. I'm estimating these are $600,000 homes, $420,000 assessed. So, yeah, if, I mean, $600,000, our home's got a four or five bedroom. So, so, yeah, probably more than one, one, one student, but I just, you know, conservatively did the .8. And I was just kind of, this little spreadsheet here, I was just comparing kind of, okay, well, what's, what's our anticipated expenses? And then if, if this happened, what would be the anticipated revenues as well? So, over to the right here, I used our current mill rate. I used a $600,000 house. I thought that was, that was pretty conservative. Try to buy a $600,000, our brand-new house in this town. Good luck. So, $600,000, and then just said, okay, what would that do to the grant list? So, you could see if all those houses were $600,000 together, those 45 houses represent $27 million. Our grant list is just shy of $3 billion. So, this is .1, it's like a tenth of a percent of a mill, okay? If we had these houses. So, it's, it's not much there. As far, you know, a $3 billion grant list. But looking at like, what's the impact if, you know, we had all these houses there, if we had the roads, if we had to send police, fire, we had to have dispatchers, the EOC. I didn't take into account, I never, I ran out of time today. I was going to do the roads, snow, salt, and then I was also going to do, you know, everything else that we, we do. I just focused on, I was talking to the Joe Burgal, the Public Works Director, this afternoon, and I said, "Talk to me about trash." So, that's why you see that, that little random column there for trash collection. And, and I tell you, when we broke it down, oh, that, that'll be interesting to see what that one's about. But we will, so just trash collection, I didn't realize how much trash cost. If we go to the bottom of this little worksheet here, tipping fees, per, per household, we're spending $71 a household on garbage. For the trucks, almost 20 bucks per household for trucks, maintenance and buying new ones. And then the salaries for the three drivers and the sanitation foreman, $44 a house. So, just garbage, you know, the town's paying 120 bucks a household. You extrapolate that over 45 houses, and you know, you just keep doing the neighborhood here, neighborhood here, we got to hire another driver, got to get another truck. So, I just wanted to kind of account for that somewhere. So, I know I focused a little too heavily on garbage and, you know, some other things, but that just should goes to show you something as simple as trash pickup has a tenth, you know, that's two, five, $6,000 just for that one neighborhood in trash pickup. So, I was just trying to explain the costs there. So, really, you know, the big driver of our operating budget is the Board of Ed, 70% of our budget. So, just looking here, if those houses were here today, I'd estimate we're going to bring, we're going to have to spend about $639,000 using 2020 per pupil costs for these houses at less than one student a house. That is not, that does not take into account any special ed students. And I believe the last time I heard the statistic, it was one out of every 20 is a special ed student. So, we could assume two special ed students in that neighborhood if it's just .8. So, I mean, you could see how that, that the Board of Ed expense could really, you know, it doesn't take many students to raise that up. So, I know I kind of didn't do a full financial analysis on every expense on town, but I picked the big one and then some ones I thought were interesting.
Thank you. I think it is a really good exercise, and I think it just, when you say, oh, we're just spending money on this, it's, it's more than just spending money, it's avoiding expenses.
Well, and the money, so I forgot to, most, one of the most important parts, how much tax revenue would those 45 properties bring in? About $470,000 at the current 24.88 mills. So, if it was up to 25, we're looking at about a half a million dollars. But on the flip side, we're going to spend 650-plus on educating those, the kids in those houses. So, the students in those houses. So...
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone have any questions, comments on?
And I think online, just one, one point for single-family homes. Every student in the average home, I believe it took 28 and a half years for, you know, say that family was there for 30 years, that family paid more than they received in education. If they were there for less than 28 and a half years, the, the rest of the town picked up the bill for that education. So, that's just using the median household number. Yeah, I mean, $18,000 per year per student. So, 12 years in school for 12, 13 years. Any questions?
No. Great.
But we lost our, we lost our feed.
So, because the option three that we'd be going with involves debt issuance, bond counsel has been very much involved, and we have a number of resolutions here that we need to pass in order for us to proceed with option three correctly. So, as I, as I mentioned last night, the Board of Selectmen met, and they resolved to undertake all of these same resolutions that we're going to do right now.
I think you do laptop on computer.
Okay.
If you go back to wireless presentation, Paul, I can fix it. I'll just go here and... That was just, that was just kind of, so there's something on there. That was just, that was just kind of, so there's something up there.
All right, so first is a resolution approving the purchase of real property for a cost not exceeding two million, three hundred and fifty thousand. John, do you want?
Okay, so resolved. Section one, the town desires to purchase for open space preservation certain properties as more specifically described in the purchase agreement to be executed by the town with respect to the properties generally known as the Brainard Road property, the Oswegachi Hills property, and the Hathaway Farms property in parentheses, the properties. The cost of such real property exceeds ten thousand dollars, and as such requires approval of the town needing as prescribed in charters section seven-point-seven, the purchase of the, the properties for an amount not to exceed two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is hereby approved. Section two, to meet the cost of said properties in appropriation in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars from the open space fund is hereby approved. Section three, pending the issuance of the bonds authorized to finance the purchase of the properties, the town halls fund, the expected expenditure from the monies held in the bonded capital fund of the general fund, and reimburse the bonded capital fund upon issuance of the bonds by the town in 2024. The temporary transfer from and reimbursement of the bonded capital funds is hereby approved.
All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying, oh, sorry, yes. Second.
Second the resolution.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No, motion carries six-zero-zero. Uh, next is the resolution making appropriation from the open space fund and approving a temporary transfer from the bonded capital fund. Lauren?
Whereas the town desires to purchase for open space preservation certain properties as more specifically described in the purchase agreements to be executed by the town with respect to the properties generally known as the Brainard Road property, the Oswegachi Hills property, and the Hathaway Farms property, together the properties. Whereas the town desires to fund the purchase of the properties from various sources, including an appropriation from the town's open space fund and a temporary transfer of funds on hold in the town's bonded capital fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Finance that section one, to meet a portion of the cost of said properties and appropriation in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars from the open space fund is hereby approved. Section two, pending the approval and the issuance of the bonds authorized to finance the purchase of the properties, the town is authorized to fund the purchase of the properties from monies held in the bonded capital fund of the general fund, and to reimburse the bonded capital fund upon the issuance of bonds by the town. The temporary transfer from and reimbursement of the bonded capital funds is hereby approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No, motion carries six-zero-zero. And then we have, um, the final draft motions, all we want to.
Is this, um, two motions or is it one?
It's, it's two.
Two separate.
So this is group bonding the full amount, not the net amount?
So, okay, so, um, upon talking with bond council, we're going to authorize the full amount, but we're not issuing it, and then next year, um, when we go to bond, we will retract whatever we're not bonding. So it'll be, you know, one-point-seven million, we're estimating.
Just a flexibility, though.
Correct.
All right, resolved, that the resolution entitled resolution making appropriations aggregating two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of properties for open space preservation and authorizing the issuance of two million, two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bonds of the town to meet said appropriations, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached heretofore, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at a special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the, uh, resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, six-zero-zero.
Okay. And finally, resolved that the resolution entitled resolution approving the purchase of real property for a cost not exceeding two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a copy of which is attached heretofore, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at a special town meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero-zero, motion carries. So, um, this will go to referendum on October, about here.
It'll, it'll go on October seventeenth because Board of Selectmen will be meeting at seven-thirty to take action, that. We will, because of, here again, bond council has, we have, we have a lot to read tonight, um, because we technically have to special, schedule a special town meeting, but then in the motions, we'll schedule that meeting for October seventeenth at eight a.m., which will adjourn to a referendum by ballot at the community center, a little bit more language in there, and since in view of that, the special town meeting is canceled. So you, there's, there is a scheduled one, but never really it takes place, and.
But the important thing is that everybody would be voting at?
Everyone would be voting at the community center, and, yeah, we are all set to send that out. The, uh, town clerk has the ballot questions and so forth like that, so we're really all set to go for this. And here again, you know, I'm going to, you, I, I don't even have to look up Mark Block's phone number anymore. I, I know, I know it automatically because we talk so frequently. And say with Dave Panico from the bond council.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, public discussion. Anyone from the public have comments that, uh, can be addressed by the Board of Finance? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.